Good evening and welcome to the Coon Rapids City Council meeting for Tuesday, May 20th, 2025. If you could please rise and join us for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's call the roll.
Councilmember Bruscoviaak.
Councilmember Butler.
Here.
Councilmember Novak.
Here.
Councilmember Geisler.
Here.
Councilmember Armstrong.
Here.
Councilmember Carlson.
Here.
Mayor Cook.
Here.
One absent Bruscoviaak.
Thank you. All right, why don't we adopt this evening's agenda?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Geisler.
I move approval to adopt the agenda removing item 15, the introduction of an ordinance regarding the fire prevention code.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Novak to approve the agenda without item 15. Is there any discussion or corrections? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and the agenda is adopted. And the very first thing we have is we have our Poppy Day proclamations. These are always fun. We do these every year. And we have two of our community groups here. Do you want to come up together then?
Yeah.
All right, very good. So, we're going to invite up the American Legion Post 334 and the auxiliary, along with the VFW Post 9625 and auxiliary. I'll meet you down front. Good evening. Okay, well, first we'll do the proclamations, and then we'll have you invite or introduce yourselves, and then tell us a little bit about what's going on. So, I should have opened these first. Come on, there we go. Nice noise, real professional, I know. Thanks for letting us...both of these proclamations are exactly the same except for the first paragraph, so we appreciate working together on this. For Poppy Days, whereas the Coon Rapids Veterans of Foreign Wars Post 9625 and the Veterans of Foreign Wars Auxiliary have adopted the poppy as their commemorative symbol, and whereas the Coon Rapids American Legion Post 334 and auxiliary have adopted the poppy as their commemorative symbol, and whereas the memorial poppy assembled by disabled veterans pays respectful tribute to those killed in war and also benefits the living veterans and their families, and whereas public donations for poppies fund rehabilitation programs within each local community that benefit veterans, their families, and ultimately our state and nation, and whereas the basic purpose of the annual distribution of poppies is eloquently reflected in the desire to honor the dead by helping the living. Now, therefore, I, Jerry Cook, Mayor of the city of Coon Rapids, on behalf of the Coon Rapids City Council hereby proclaim May 23rd, 2025 to be Poppy Day, urging all citizens of Coon Rapids to recognize the merits of this cause by contributing generously and to wear a poppy as mute evidence of our gratitude to the men and women of this country who have risked their lives in defense of the freedoms which we continue to enjoy as American citizens, proclaimed this 20th day of May 2025. Let me let you introduce yourself.
Commander Chris Fryan, American Legion.
Auxiliary President for the American Legion Post 334.
Who are you?
I'm Ann Stefan.
Thank you, Ann.
I'm Diane Bowman. I'm the poppy chairman for the Legion.
9625 auxiliary president, Yvonne Sandin.
And I'm Nathan Morgan, the Coon Rapids 9625 commander. Thank you very much.
Where will these...where will people...they'll be able to find these?
So, we always take donations at our post for Poppy Days. We did do our Poppy Day donations. We might have seen...everyone might have seen us out in front of restaurants and grocery stores in the city. I think it was the weekend of the 9th, we were out there. We started raising money that weekend, but all throughout May is where we can go. You can always come into our post. We have poppies. We still have cards that we're collecting donations for. And then people can just come in. They can donate. They can request to donate to a veteran in need, and we can facilitate getting that to that veteran.
Also, also this weekend, on Saturday morning at 10 o'clock, we'll be at Morningside Cemetery doing a ceremony, then Bunker Hills, following with a lunch. On Monday, we will be at Epiphany, the second cemetery, along with Joyce on the corner of Hanson and Northdale, and then back at our circle to do another ceremony.
We were out this past weekend, the 16th and 17th, at Cub Foods, and I want to thank Cub for letting us stand inside because it was a little cold and wet. And we thank everyone for coming and donating to us.
So, let me just say, Poppy Days are every day of the year. You don't have to wait for a proclamation, but super excited that you did that. Donations can be accepted anytime, all year long, and it goes for our veterans. So, I would hope that if you can, just honor the veterans. My favorite guy here and over here, these guys are doing amazing things as well as the auxiliary. You don't just have to wait for a certain day. We take donations anytime, and we will always have a poppy ready to go for you if you would like to support that as well. So, thanks to the community. And Jerry, thanks for being there for us, too.
I do want to say thank you for having us up here today.
Well, all right. Well, first, who's taking the Legion proclamation?
Well, right here, we had our poppies.
And then the VFW proclamation down here. All right. And now, the beauty of stopping into the VFW to get your poppies is you've got excellent food and a full bar. So, I'm just saying while you're there.
We also would like to thank the VFW because our auxiliary does meet there, and we have a lot of events also at the VFW.
Yeah, yeah, no, for sure. And as you know, or maybe don't know, the Coon Rapids American Legion, our post isn't...we don't have a brick and mortar, but we definitely collaborate with those in town, and we just want to thank everybody for supporting the Legion as well. We're still doing our thing around town. So, thank you, Commander and President. We appreciate you guys.
All right, before you sit down, Diane, you do your thing. I just want to...
I'll take another one.
I just want to highlight that again. This Saturday at Morningside, thank you, I had the wrong word there. Morningside Cemetery at 10:00 a.m., there's a memorial service there, and then you go from there over to Bunker...
Bunker Activities Center.
Bunker Activities Center, and is that at noon then?
Eleven thirty.
At 11:30. Okay, so 10:00 at Morningside on University, 11:30 at Bunker Hills Activity Center. That's not the golf course. That's the one up off of Bunker Lake Boulevard. Okay, and then Sunday, you're going to be at Epiphany Sunday morning and over at Joyce Chample Cemetery.
That's on Monday.
Monday. I thought I said Monday, but maybe I didn't. Did I? I'm that guy over there. All right, okay.
We do have our VFW day of service on Sunday morning at Epiphany. We're putting flags on veterans' headstones.
That's what I meant to...that's what's going on Sunday, putting flags out there, yeah. Thank you very much. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Diane, oh, thank you.
Nathan.
Thanks for all that you do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that is awesome. And those services are very inspiring if you are available to get out there. You do want to get there early, though, because there's not a lot of parking at Morningside, and so you'll end up walking always. All right, we are up to item three, and that's the approval of the minutes of the May 6th, 2025 meeting.
Motion to approve the minutes?
Second.
Motion by Carlson, and a second by Butler to approve the minutes. Is there any discussion or corrections? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and those minutes are approved. Now, we wanted to approve the April 22nd Local Board of Appeal and Equalization Minutes.
Motion to approve the April 22nd Local Board of Appeal and Equalization Minutes?
Second.
Motion by Carlson. I'm going to give that one to Butler. I think he just beat you out. I'm by a split second there, Armstrong. Any discussion or corrections? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and that motion carries. One abstention, actually. Board member Novak was...missed that one.
Thank you.
Yep. Next, item five is to approve the May 6th Local Board of Appeal and Equalization Minutes.
Motion to approve the May 6th, 2025 Local Board of Appeal and Equalization Minutes?
Second.
Motion by Butler and a second by Geisler. Is there any discussion or corrections? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and those minutes are approved. We have six items on our consent agenda this evening. And the first one, here we go, is to approve the Verizon Wireless First Amendment to a lease for Wintercrest Monopole. The city and Selco Partnership Doing Business as Verizon Wireless entered into a lease agreement on November 18th, 2005 to allow Verizon to lease space on the Wintercrest Park Monopole for telecommunication purposes. They are in the process of refurbishing its directional antennas, and in that process, they desire the ability to place 13 directional antennas on the monopole. Currently, the lease allows for 12. City staff don't object to the addition as long as the antennas meet all the requirements under the current lease and the city ordinances. As a consideration of the added antenna, Verizon will pay the city an additional $2,700 in rent per year. Under the current lease, Verizon's rent in 2025 is $31,179.40. So, we're looking to approve and execute...I'm sorry, approve and execution of the First Amendment to the lease agreement with Selco Partnership Doing Business as Verizon Wireless. Next item on our consent agenda is to approve a temporary on-sale strong beer and wine liquor license for the Fourth of July community celebration to the Coon Rapids North Star Lions. Stephen Wells, on behalf of the Coon Rapids North Star Lions, has applied for a temporary on-sale strong beer and wine liquor license to be used at the Fourth of July community celebration to be located at the Boulevard Plaza Park, 11,000 Crooked Lake Boulevard, July 2nd, 3rd, and 4th, 2025. The appropriate fees have been paid. The certificate of insurance for liquor liability is on file, and the background investigation has been completed and approved by the police department. Wouldn't that be surprising if that one didn't pass? The temporary on-sale strong beer and wine liquor license will be valid from 8:00 a.m. to midnight from July 2nd through July 4th, 2025. So, this motion is to approve a temporary strong beer and wine liquor license for Coon Rapids North Star Lions for use at the Fourth of July community celebration from July 2nd through July 4th. And the next item on our consent agenda item...or consent agenda, which is item eight, is for just an informational item only. There's been a corporate officer change at the American Multicinema Incorporated. The city council must be notified of any changes in legal ownership or beneficial interest of a liquor license holder, and so the notice advised that the following changes have been made. Kevin Connor, as general counsel, has retired, and Edwin Goldbach has been appointed to take over this position. The Coon Rapids licensed establishment affected by these changes is AMC Theaters 10051 Woodcrest Drive Northwest. This was informational purposes only. The next item on the consent agenda is to adopt resolution...resolution 25-70, amending the city's fee schedule. In recent months, the community development department has transitioned to a new software platform for rental licensing, property maintenance, building permit, and planning functions. During implementation, staff discovered that the new software could not calculate rental licensing fees as structured by the current fee schedule. The new...so, we're looking to amend the fee schedule to base the fee on the total number of units in the property rather than basing it on the number of units inspected. The structure is expected to result in a similar amount of rental licensing revenue. While the proposed structure is designed to result in as little change as possible, smaller complexes will generally pay a smaller fee, and larger complexes will generally pay a higher fee than under the current arrangements. We're looking to adopt resolution 25-70, amending the city's adopted 2025 fee schedule for rental license and inspection fees. And I suppose because we're adopting the fee schedule, I should go back and actually read that. Currently, we're $60 per building plus $20 per unit. I'm sorry. We are going to amend it to $60 per building plus $12 per unit rather than basing it on the number of units inspected. So, it's currently $60 per building and $25 per unit inspected. So, that's the fee change. Item 10 is to approve a waiver of fees for use of the portable stage for Faith Lutheran Church. Faith Lutheran Church is requesting a waiver of half the fees for use of the portable stage for two dates in 2025, July 13th and July 17th. The portable stage is 520 per day per the approved 2025 fee schedule. They are located next to the city's Public Works Building, located on 111th Avenue, and Faith Lutheran has allowed for overflow parking use at their facility for the Public Works Open House event that takes place the third weekend in May each year. This year, it was this past Saturday, and yes, we parked on the Faith Lutheran parking lot. This cooperation, combined with the fact that the facility is close to the stage storage location at Public Works, makes it reasonable to staff that some of the standard fee could be waived. So, we're looking to waive half of the fees for the stage rental, which would be $520. The renter, Faith Lutheran, would also be required to sign an agreement and provide liability insurance, listing the city as an additional insured. The next item on the consent agenda is actually the last item, and this is to receive the schedule of electronic payments. We've got our electronic payments processed since the last council meeting, so we're looking to receive the schedule of electronic payments from 5/1/2025 to 5/14/2025. And that's our consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Butler.
I move that we adopt the consent agenda as listed, and I'll second that.
Motion by Butler and a second by Novak. Is there any questions or discussion on the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Carlson.
You beat me to the punch commenting on the background checking that liquor license, so I'll leave that one alone.
You beat all of us.
But I did want to say how much I appreciate our partnership with Faith Lutheran Church as I appreciate our partnerships with NOKA Ramsey and all the other entities we have in Coon Rapids. I think these partnerships really make the world go around, and I appreciate what they do for us. So, it's nice to be able to do something for them in return.
Absolutely. All right, any other discussion or questions? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and the consent agenda is adopted. We're up to item 12 to consider resolution 25-10 sub 9, accepting bid and awarding contract for Fire Station Number Two driveway and parking lot replacement project 25-10. Mr. Hammer?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Council. Thank you. We opened bids last week on the Fire Station Two concrete project. That included a base bid of just mainly the parking lot area, and then we had three other alternates just to make sure we could afford the project. Some of that is miscellaneous curb out on the roadway. Some of it is elsewhere on the site adjacent to the parking lot. Many competitive bids, lots of bidders, all pretty tightly spaced. And we came up with Ebert Companies as the lowest responsive bidder. There was a lower bidder. However, they did not acknowledge an addenda on the project, nor did they submit a bid bond, both of which are required. So, we've thrown that bid out, and we're recommending to award to Ebert Companies for the base plus all three alternates in the amount of $242,678.62. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Very good. Any questions of Mr. Hammer on this?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Geisler.
I move that we adopt resolution 25-10 sub 9, awarding a contract to Ebert Companies in the amount of $242,678.62 for project 25-10 Fire Station Number Two driveway and parking lot replacement project.
Second.
Motion by Geisler and a second by Novak. Is there a discussion on this? We're going to have it done for the...oh, that's right, we're not doing the open house this year, are we? No, all right, never mind. We'll just have it done.
Yes.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and that motion carries. Item 13 is to consider resolution 25-61 sub 9, awarding a contract for the Public Works roof replacement. Mr. Hammer?
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor, Council. We again had quite a few bidders on this project. While we certainly can't afford it all, it's a very large building over there. We did bid it in alternates because there is that back section. That's the newest section of the building, so that one can wait a little while. It's wide open over those last two bays on the backside. So, this will cover all the front office areas, the original bay, which is, I think, where the utility staff is, the extra mechanic's shop on the outside. So, this basically does about two-thirds to three-quarters of the project. It's right within our line of budget. And so, McPhillips Brothers has done City Hall. They've done our two water treatment plants. They're a good contractor. So, we are recommending award to McPhillips Brothers Roofing for the base bid and alternate one only with a total of $930,395. Oh, I'm sorry. That is the base bid. The total would be $1,4,770.
Anybody have any questions of Mr. Hammer on that?
Your Honor.
Councilmember Novak.
I move to adopt resolution number 25-61 sub 9, awarding a contract to McPhillips Brothers Roofing Company to include the base bid of $930,395 and alternate one of $74,375 for a total amount of $1,4,770.
Second.
It's really quiet there.
Sat there for a second.
Spending a million dollars, nobody wanted to second. Motion by Novak and a second by Geisler. Is there a discussion on this?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Carlson.
Just want to say how much I appreciate the competitive bidding process. I mean, it's a million dollars, but why we saved a lot of money on those bids.
All right.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Geisler.
And I would just say that the Public Works Building was wonderful to enjoy at the Public Works Open House. So, if you didn't make it this year, plan for it next year, and it'll have a brand-new roof on it.
Not that we got wet this year.
No, we didn't. We didn't.
All right. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and that motion carries. Item 14 is to consider resolution 25-68 and 25-69 for the 2025-1 appealed assessment levy. Ms. Hanson, is this still kind of the amounts we got, or do we have...do we pay some of them off, or?
Nope, the amounts are consistent with what's on the memo.
All right.
And then, so, I mean, the amount's total $11,524.40.
All right. Very good. Any questions of Ms. Hanson on this?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Carlson.
Make a motion to adopt resolution 25-68 and 25-69, adopting 2025 sub 1 miscellaneous special assessments, contested miscellaneous assessments, one year and three years.
Second.
Motion by Carlson and a second by Butler. Is there a discussion? Again, we thank the Board of Adjustment Appeals for all their yeoman work on this. Every one of these got a very fair hearing, and I just trust the process. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and that motion carries. Item 16 is to consider resolution 25-71, authorizing submittal of federal funding application for Trunk Highway 610 and East River Road. Mr. Hammer?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, there's a slight correction on the memo itself. This is not Minnesota State House and Senate. This is at the federal level. So, we applied last year for the discretionary funding, the community project-based funding, because that didn't move forward. They invited us back again to do the same thing this year. So, we're still short on that construction funding. We're asking for the dollars anywhere we can. The initial ask is the $10 million. The fallback would be $3 million. That allows the property acquisitions to move forward. So, I got to get these letters of support and resolutions in this week, and so we put this on the agenda to get your feedback, and again, happy to answer any questions.
Very good. This is the one that's going to get us the money?
All of them together.
Any questions of Mr. Hammer on this?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Armstrong.
I move that we adopt resolution 25-71, authorizing the submittal of 2026 community project funding application for construction of TH 610 at East River Road Full Access Interchange.
Second.
Motion by Armstrong and a second by Geisler. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and that motion carries. Is there anybody here to address council on open mic this evening? Anybody here for open mic? All right. I have one response from last council meeting's open mic. We had Mr. Derek Lynn from ASIT here, and he addressed the council requesting us to consider termination of an agreement with NOKA County for the use of electronic pole pads. We've...thank you, staff, for drafting a response, and I assume we included this agreement in our mailing to him, do you think, or?
No.
Oh, that might have been it. I don't know. He can read it online. It's posted.
Probably already has.
Probably already has. You're right.
Likely did not get his mail before.
The city of Coon Rapids entered into an agreement outlining the conditions of an equipment license to operate electronic pole pads and placed paper rosters in June of 2018, and the agreement is here. And this agreement obligates the city to store and secure the equipment, but ownership of the equipment remains within the county or with the county, and the county is also responsible for any updates, maintenance, replacements, et cetera. This is really inside baseball. I'm not going to read the last paragraph, but he's got his response, and there we go. We're up to other business. Crickets?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Carlson.
So, Saturday, we had the...there was the Play for Patrick event at the Coon Rapids High School. It's the second time it's been the high school in the last 10 years. So, Play for Patrick is part of the Shunover Heart Foundation, providing free, very, very detailed health screens to young people ages 14 to 24. This is all a result of 14-year-old Patrick Shunover dying at the age of 14 during a hockey game. His parents started this foundation. It was a great day. A lot of Coon Rapids kids there. There's also kids from all over the area. In total, 120 kids were screened for heart anomalies. My wife was taking blood pressures with her nursing experience. I have no particular useful experience, so I was ushering people. You know, we also had 10 minutes of CPR training, 10 minutes of AED. That was my job, was to usher people in the correct direction. But it was a great day. Like I said, 120 heart screens. 146 people received some basic CPR and AED training. The Coon Rapids High School is part of this. The Coon Rapids High School will have two public AEDs. One will be by the athletic field. One will be between the high school and the middle school. So, if there's any emergency, someone can access these AEDs right there, and that is what is saving lives. Of course, CPR is great, but that quick access to the AEDs have really...that saves a lot of lives. So, it was a...it was a great day. It was a really great day, and hats off to the Shunover Heart Foundation and Mike and Gail Shunover for all their great work. They took a tragedy, and they're using it to save lives. Up till Saturday, they had screened approximately 7,000 kids, and they have found 359 kids with one or more heart anomalies, heart anomalies that would be life-threatening if they were undetected. So, they're out there saving lives, doing good work.
That's awesome. And those two AEDs for the outfield are not just the AED. It's the outside cabinet, which is about four times the cost of the AED, because it's got to be heated, video, cell link, I think. Doesn't it call 911 automatically? Yeah, I mean, they're pretty...
It's pretty cool, Mr. Mayor.
They're pretty cool.
You flip that door open, and the alarm goes off, and it calls 911. 911, and yeah, the, the cabinet keeps it, the AED at the proper temperature, temperature and suchlike, and there's, there's locators in the AED in case it isn't going where it's supposed to go, and, uh, it's pretty neat.
Awesome.
Right out of Star Trek.
Thank you, and thanks for doing that.
Of course, it was a great time.
Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Geisler?
Uh, I just, uh, since we won't have a council meeting before, I wanted to wish all the soon-to-be Coon Rapids High School grads, congratulations, and best wishes on your futures. Uh, they will be, uh, graduated, their ceremony's on the 1st coming up here, uh, which is a Sunday, so we won't have a meeting before that, but, uh, I've got one graduating this year, so I'm excited, but, uh, for all the other parents out there doing that as well, um, good luck, and, uh, enjoy your time with your family as they go on to the next phase.
Go Big Red.
Awesome.
And then come back for the 4th of July all, uh, all re- all-class reunion.
What's the, uh, what's Coon Rapids High School? It's a great, it's a great day to be a Cardinal.
It's a great day to be a Cardinal.
You know it. All right, any other business 10 before council? Mr. Mayor? Councilmember Armstrong?
Just a reminder, I know we covered it this, earlier, but the Memorial Days, or Memorial Celebrations, 10:00 AM at Morningside Memorial Gardens, 11:30 at Bunker Hills Event Center. Um, I'm a little bit of a history buff, so anytime I see a veteran, I like to shake their hand, say, thank them, et cetera, and just a reminder, Memorial Day, the, the, this was set aside for the, the ones that died serving their country, and, uh, we, we love our veterans, um, but remember on Memorial, these are the people that gave the ultimate sacrifice, um, and we owe, we owe them a lot. Um, sometimes history gets set aside or gets forgotten when we're growing up and being educated, et cetera. We wouldn't be here today if it wasn't for them, so thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. Okay, any other business?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion by Carlson, second by Novak to adjourn. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
To adjourn.
Mr. Mayor?
The...
[music]